Okay, and we have Kathy to do the pre-.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for attending our meeting tonight. And we have a special event coming in in a few moments. We'll start with a call to order, which we just did. And it's 6:35 PM. And we can go with Alderman Kathy Quinn, who's going to tell you the rest of the story.
In accordance with the applicable statutes of the state of Illinois, an ordinance of the city of Prospect Heights, notice is hereby given that the regular council meeting of the mayor and city council of the city of Prospect Heights will be held Monday, November 25th, 2019, at 6:35 PM. In the council chambers, Prospect Heights City Hall, 8 North Elmhurst Road, Prospect Heights, Illinois. Mayor Nicholas J. Homer presiding. And then we will introduce the color guard led by the Girl Scout Troop 43062.
Are we ready for that? We need to have a roll call, though, don't we? After the pledge, we said before the pledge. Yes, let's have a roll call for quorum. A quorum out of five people would be three. One of the aldermen is on the way, but I believe we have four, so we'll still qualify. Take the roll, please.
Okay. Morgan Adams, which will be...
She's on the way.
Alderman Dolick.
Here.
Alderman Quinn.
Here.
Alderman Ludwigson.
Here.
Alderman Cameron.
Here.
So we have four of the five aldermen, which constitutes a quorum. And we can go to the next issue. What do we have, Karen? Are we bringing the troops in?
Girl Scout Troop 43062, their color guard will come in now.
Audience, please rise to the presentation of colors.
Wow.
Color guard, attention. Color guard, post the colors. Ladies and gentlemen, the flag of our country, you pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Girl Scouts, our promise.
On my honor, I will try to serve God and my country, to help people at all times, and to live by the Girl Scout laws.
Color guard, retreat. Audience, may we see them?
Great, great job. Thank you.
Hi, Dave, David, City Council, and if you need attendance. The Girl Scout Troop 43062 has been together since the first grade. Last year, as fifth-grade scout juniors, they decided to pursue the Bronze Award. The Girl Scout Bronze Award journey is big. In fact, this award is the highest honor a Girl Scout junior can achieve. The path the girls follow is exciting and quite challenging. It takes time and dedication to the community, the family, and to self. Earning the Girl Scout Bronze Award involves time to complete the journey, and at least 20 hours of planning the project, putting it in motion, and spreading the word. When our girls gathered to decide how to make a long-lasting impact on our community, the choice was clear. They decided to, they, excuse me, they decided to plant oak trees. Each girl dedicated about 70 hours of personal time to work and complete this project. With guidance and education by the Prospect Heights Natural Resource Commission, the commissioners Agnes Ojanarski, Peter Han, and Dana Severson, and donations of material and funding from local businesses, as well as volunteer help, our girls planted 20, 25 oak seedlings in the Prospect Heights community. The project was completed by presenting it at the Forest Preserve District of Cook County's annual fall festival, and giving out 200 potted oak seedlings to the public. I would like to invite Peter Han, Natural Resource Commissioner, who has been mentor and a great support in this project, to present this special award to the Girl Scouts.
Thank you, Peter.
So we would like to call the Girl Scout Troop, get the time and all the knowledge to this project to present the certificates.
Can we ask you to have the girls talk at the microphone? Because we televise everything. It would be nice to have a name and a face to go with.
Oh, okay, sure, definitely.
Okay, so next one is Sophia Beerman.
Can I interrupt you one more time?
Sure.
We have two former Girl Scouts right in our audience, in our diocese here. Alderpeople, alder... I never get, I get confused when it's women. I also say aldermen, so it's alderwomen. And they'd like to join you, I think, with the awards, and maybe place their hand on the shoulder of the person getting the award.
It'll be an honor.
For the picture that we could send out.
Sure, definitely.
We have Alderman Quinn.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And Alderman Cameron.
So the next girl awarded with a Bronze certificate is Lauren Isinger. Thank you, Sophia. And Emily Pavidas. So each girl gets a certificate and the Bronze Award pin for the project they completed. Thank you, Ms. Beerman. On behalf of the troop and everyone involved in this project, we would like to honor the parents, Richard Beerman, and Natural Resource Commissioner Peter Han, with a certificate of appreciation and an Oak Pin in recognition for important contribution to the Bronze Award project, their dedication and education to implement community projects. Would you like...
So I just would like to thank everyone for coming to honor our girls. And thank you, Prospect Heights City Hall, for hosting this memorable, memorable event for our troop. Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor.
Audience, please rise to the retiring of the colors.
Huh?
Color guard, attention. Color guard, retire the colors. Color guard, retreat. Audience, may we see them?
I mean, I know Rich, his twins were little babies. Known Rich, and his little girls, they're both twins. Known them when they were months old.
That was the best meeting ever. Yes.
Could you, could you stay for a few moments? If I could have your attention. We always entertain a invocation before we start our assignments for city council meetings. I can give you my background. It's not a priest, it's not a minister, but I was a Cub Scout, and also an altar boy for the elementary school years. Oh, also in high school. Thank you, Lord, for having given us the opportunity to meet and greet the little people. They are our futures. They are the futures that will keep us going and do the right thing. And the right thing certainly is embodied by the Girl Scouts, and the Cub Scouts, and the Brownies, and all the higher rankings of the Boy Scouts. They do the right thing. And we are really pleased that we had the opportunity, and thank you, thank the Lord for giving us that opportunity to spend a little time away from the problems and issues of all kinds of things that it takes to run a city. You all will be running a city in your future. So congratulations. Thank you for coming, and enjoy your evening. All right, look at the exit, and then we can get started.
Yeah.
I would...
Thanks.
Oh, okay, I thought they were symbols. You were gonna sing a song. Should we go? Yeah, let's close the door.
Okay. Next item we have is approval minutes from the November 11th city council meeting.
Motion to approve, please.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussions, comments, deletions, additions, there being none? Let's have a roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Ludwigson.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Which brings us to item six, presentations. We've recognized the Girl Scouts. Item B is presentation request for council approval of 2020, 2021 city vehicle sticker design. As discussed previously, we've, we're recognizing the census as a theme of this year's vehicle sticker. It's a good way to recognize the participation in the process. We have before you a number of vehicle stickers. Peter, do you want to give a little bit of information, just how you came about this? You sent this out to members of the Complete Count Committee and so forth?
Thank you, Administrator Wade. As Joe, Administrator Wade mentioned, we do, we did, City of Prospect Heights did put together a Complete Count Committee, which is the first step, pretty much, for any municipality with the upcoming 2020 census. We, that involves the library, the park districts, a bunch of different taxing bodies, even religious institutions. So we had sent an idea around to everybody, just to see if they had any ideas. We here at the city staff don't have a graphic designer. I, that duty kind of falls on me, and I'm incredibly lacking. So I'm the first to admit that. So we just came up with some ideas. Those are the ones on the left. And then some industrious individuals, I don't know if they're actual aldermen or friends of aldermen, came up with the very more colorful ones on the right. So this is going to be the vehicle sticker. And we wanted to do this because of awareness for the 2020 census next year. And it's, it's a perfect, it's perfect timing, actually, because, as you know, Prospect Heights residents who buy vehicle stickers, that starts February 1st, and you have to purchase your sticker by April 1st. So April 1st is Census Day. So we wanted to do this two-week, two-week, month run-up, so that people, anybody coming in getting a vehicle sticker here at Prospect Heights was reminded about the census, because it's very, very important to not only all municipalities, but Prospect Heights, due to the fact that we are a non-home rule community. So what we're asking, what staff is asking for right now is a decision by the council, by the mayor and the elected officials, on what design they want to go forward with. Because actually, believe it or not, I know 2020 sounds kind of far away. We should have actually had this designed into the printer already. So he's holding off, waiting on us. So if you can, if the elected officials can give us an idea of what direction they wish to go into, so that we can get these into production, so that we have them by February 1st for the sale of the vehicle stickers.
So are you looking for a vote, or a suggestion, or what are we doing?
I was hopeful that we would settle on a design idea tonight, so that we could have it to the printer as early as tomorrow.
Well, let's see if we can get consensus. Alderman Quinn, what is your...
Okay, since I was the alderman who added some. I either like nine or 10, just because we like the idea of the hands, and we like the bright colors. The number 10, everyone counts, is actually a logo that was taken from Orange County, North Carolina, uses that for their census, but it says Census US. So those are the two that I would pick.
She's not here. Wendy's not here. Oh, yes, ma'am.
Me? Oh. I would, I would pick the same nine or 10.
Nine or 10.
Yeah. Can we ask the police chief what he thinks? Which one he likes?
Absolutely.
Here.
Yeah, I had just looked at these briefly. I think nine or 10 would be a good choice. Something, at least for the officers, when they drive down the street, when they're looking for stickers, something that pops out, it's easy to see, to identify that it's Prospect Heights over some other one. So if it's a little different than the other towns, it's helpful for our guys to recognize it.
All right, thank you. Going down the line. Alderman Dolick.
I too like nine or 10 of the two. I would say number nine would be my favorite, but I don't have a problem with either one.
All right. Alderman Ludwigson.
I'd say the same thing, except I'd say number 10, but...
And who's left? Anyone? Well, I would make the change on any one of these to the spelling of my name being corrected. It would be nice, nice to do that. Other than that, I like them all, they're great. But I do have a question, and it was probably already announced. When is the census?
The census will be mailed out mid-March, but primarily through April. April is the census month. That's why April 1st is considered Census Day. I know it's April 1st, but it just happens to fall that way. So that's why this is so important, because everyone has to have their stickers by April 1st, and this would be a two-month run-up to the census, which starts in April, so that...
All right, the reason, the reason I ask is, when is the census over? Because we have a one-year sticker here. One full year sticker, whatever we're choosing.
Well, the census by federal statute, or I don't know what exactly, by federal, by the federal standards or by law, it has to be given to the president, I believe, December 31st of 2020.
2020. So the sticker really is good all year, as far as...
Absolutely, sir, just like any other sticker.
All right, thank you. So we have one adamantly on number 10, and we have a nine or 10 on the rest. Can we try it again? Who would like to start? Let's have...
I'll start.
Cameron.
I, if I went with either one, I'd go to 10.
10, okay, that's two. Alderman Quinn.
I would, I would pick 10 also.
That's three. We almost are there. And Alderman Ludwigson, pick 10, so that's four. And Alderman Dolick.
I originally said nine or 10. I'm perfectly fine with that.
All right, so there's your marching orders, Peter. We have everyone in favor of 10. And Alderman Morgan Adams can probably be convinced, so, when she arrives. Okay, what's next?
Mayor, this is an item you invited, a meet and greet of Elsa Escobedo and Mario Martinez. These are the new owners of the Bread and Butter Cafe, which is soon to open at the Lola's, former Lola's site at 1279 North Rand.
I think they're cooking dinner. I don't see them here. The good news is that we have people that are very interested in the space in the center that is currently occupied by Lola's Palace, Lola's Pizza Palace. They're moving across the street, next to Thornton's, basically, which is also in Prospect Heights. And that leaves that part of vacancy in the shopping center. The owner of the shopping center went out and found people that run a breakfast and lunch place, something I've been looking for personally for the last nine years. We have to go eat somewhere else, not in our city for breakfast and lunch. So I think it's a great find. They were going to come, they may still come, but they're an ideal candidate. And of course, still have to go through the process. Probably Director Peterson can enlighten us a little more.
Thank you, sir. The good news is, is because that shopping center has a pre-approved planned unit development, restaurants don't have to go through the normal zoning process, which will delay, could delay a time to get approval. But they do, are going to be doing kitchen remodels, some minor interiors, so a simple building permit application should be forthcoming. We're looking to get that sometime after the 1st of December with an early first-of-the-year opening. So this is a turn, pretty much a turnkey operation, and hopefully, we'll be getting them in. This will be their second restaurant. They currently operate one in Palatine that is very active. I happened to drive by it this weekend and couldn't find a parking space. So I think it'll be a good addition here in the city.
So we'll follow a normal process, obviously. And we hope to have, they were looking to open fairly soon, right?
That is correct. Right around the first of the year, if all works well, and get their kitchen design finished.
Yeah, there are some great little restaurants around us, but none here that caters to this kind of breakfast-lunch situation, not here in Prospect Heights. So this would be a great addition, and I'm really pleased, and we'll help them in any way we can. All right, Joe, what's next?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next item on the agenda is, this is additional information to the city council regarding the Lexington Homes, proposed Muir Park area development, 1001 Oak Avenue, and proposed tax increment financing usage. Mr. Nate Weinsma of Lexington is here tonight, along with his team. This is, we're not looking for any action tonight. This is basically an opportunity to provide a little bit more information, a little bit more depth, and also to answer some of the questions that council had at the last meeting, or coming up. And Tom Burney from the last meeting, attorney representing Lexington, is at the podium.
Good evening, alderwomen and aldermen. As Joe said, I'm Tom Burney. We were here on the 11th. There were a lot of good questions. We wanted to get the information together. We brought our TIF consultants with us today. You'll be hearing from Ann Maroni. She'll be backed up by Ralph Kinzer. And then Nate will just go through the PowerPoint that I believe has been passed out to you. Since we were here on the 11th, we met with the Park District, and we're making some progress there, as far as, they've set up a negotiating committee with us, as far as trying to figure out a way to convert some of the park land, which is part of the plan that we're going to be showing you tonight, and then working out the business terms of that, if we can move forward with the TIF. So we don't expect that we'll answer all your questions. Perhaps what we present to you tonight will inspire some other questions that we can go back to, to you. But we're very much interested in pursuing this. We think that it has the opportunity to be, it's a triple win. It's a win for Lexington, it's a win for the Park District, it's a win for the city. And so thank you for hearing us again tonight.
Good evening. My name is Ann Maroni with Johnson Research Group, and I'm delighted to be here with you today. Nate and Tom asked if I would give kind of an overview of TIF, a generic overview. I understand you have two TIFs in your village, so forgive me if this is information that you already know. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, if I go too high or too deep. So just as a sort of stepping back, the TIF legislation was enacted in 1977. In the wake of declining federal funds, the state legislature identified this economic development tool as a way for municipalities to sort of control their own destiny. Without federal funds, they needed a tool that would give them a multi-year flexible economic development funding mechanism. And TIF, which is enabled by state legislation, allows municipalities, both home rule and non-home rule, to make decisions about economic development incentives. So the way that TIF works, it's intended really to allow projects to be funded by themselves. So a sort of a self-funding tool. TIF districts are designated after they go through an eligibility analysis, where they have to meet criteria that is defined by state statute. You can, you can designate an improved area, or a vacant area, or a combination of both. And there are factors that decide what makes up those designations. And after you have set the, after you have decided that the area meets designation or the criteria for qualification, the way TIF works is, and this is kind of the simple, but also complex, given the way the tax system works, is it identifies for all the, all the parcels that are in your project area, in your geographic area, it identifies what the value of those properties are. If you have 10 properties, it looks at all the value today of those properties. And it says, that's going to be our base value, against which a tax rate is applied and revenue is generated. Now, when the TIF... Now, when the TIF moves forward, and any added projects happen to that, any new development, whether it's a new building, or inflationary adjustment, or an addition, or an improvement to your home or your property, that becomes added value. And that value, that added value, is the incremental revenue that's generated for a TIF. Now, that revenue, that incremental revenue that's generated goes into a TIF fund that is dedicated to that geography. It doesn't go outside it, and it doesn't, and it's only dedicated to a certain specified eligible, it can only be used for certain eligible costs. That includes acquisitions, includes rehabilitation of properties, it includes environmental remediation, public works, public infrastructure. What it does not include, what it excludes exclusively is new construction. So anything vertical, with the exception of affordable housing. All vertical construction is not eligible. And that incremental, the base revenue continues to go to the taxing districts for the remaining life of the TIF. So the TIF is set up to last 23 years, and once it's set in place, the city can enter into agreements with third parties, developers, other taxing districts, to fund a redevelopment project. And that legal agreement allows the city to set forth what their requirements are. We will fund this project for this dollar amount, but you have to do this. So the way redevelopment's go is, the project has to be built in generating revenue, and then that revenue can go back and pay for the obligations. A TIF, as I said, can last 23 years, or can be terminated early after all of the obligations are paid. And if obligations after, are paid at an annual level, you can declare surplus in which that money can go back to the taxing districts on the prorata basis that they currently share. I do understand that there is one, or you have had experience, sort of perhaps negative experience, with the arena TIF, and I've been asked to sort of distinguish what is, how does a general TIF, or how does a TIF that's being considered today differ from the arena TIF? And I don't have, I don't have nearly enough background to know all the ins and outs, how it came to be. But as I understand it, there was considerable risk taken on the part of the city in which acquisition and some money was front-funded by the city. And I think the distinguishing factor here is, the city took the risk in that case. And the proposal in, that's being considered by my client, Lexington, is that they intend to take all the risk, and they intend to front-fund the project. Only after they have successfully completed their project would they expect to be reimbursed by TIF for the increment that they're generating. So that's kind of a, it's really a risk, city risk versus developer risk. In this case, in the arena TIF, the risk, the upfront risk was taken by the village or the city. And in this case, the upfront risk is being taken by the developer entirely. So that's kind of the short, the short synopsis of where we are. But we'll get into more details, I'm sure, when Nate stands up. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about TIF, or if you want to save them to the end.
Alderman Dolick?
No questions.
Alderman Ludwixson?
Well, since you're the TIF expert, right? You're the TIF person?
Yes.
You can't use any money for the TIF outside the boundaries of what's drawn for the TIF, right? It has to be used within the TIF itself, which is really just this project.
Yes. The only exception to that is if you have another TIF district immediately adjacent.
And if you add area to the TIF north of here, because they have issues there with flooding and things that couldn't fix with TIF money, that changes all the math and everything, because now you're freezing established properties with EAVs that are pretty stable right now, and you'd be now freezing those for that same period of time.
Well, you'd be, you're establishing the value at that place and time. You're not freezing, you're not freezing or limiting there.
You're freezing from the standpoint that you're bonding against the future collection of the future EAVs. The school districts will only see if, if one of those houses has a $200,000 EAV, it stays there for the life of the TIF. It doesn't increase.
Correct.
It does, but that increment is used to pay off the things that are being done.
Anything beyond, so if you have a $200,000 home that's right there now, and it inflates, you know, 2% annually, the revenue that the taxing district does not get is the 2%.
Which isn't as big as what this TIF, what the construction area, what the development area would generate, because you're really transforming that entire EAV completely.
That's right. And that's actually a good point, because the specifics of this geography that we're looking at is, it currently generates zero, so it's a tax-exempt property. So you're going from zero to everything. So, yeah. So there's a big difference between this and the inflationary bump that a developed area would feel.
All right. That's all. Thank you.
Alderman Wendy Morgan?
Just expanding on that, so it's not a negative thing to expand the TIF if you have another TIF area that you want to utilize adjacent to it.
That's correct. I think you want, the idea is to create your TIF boundary to include those parcels that would benefit from this tool. So you have to identify what your objectives are, and identify, and what the area that serves that, serves those objectives.
So if you want to include, for example, as Mr. Ludwixson said, the adjacent area that you know you're going to need, you know, you want to, you want to do work on, you can do that. Can you, can you, when can you expand? And you can expand at any time, correct?
You can expand at any time, but when you add parcels, you have to go through the same process that you go through when you designate a TIF the first time. So there is a required number of processes, and there's a timeline in the PowerPoint toward the end, four pages from the end, in fact. And it charts out the expected milestones that you go through, and you have to have a public hearing if you have a certain number of residents, or if you're going to displace anybody. You have to have a public hearing, and you have to have notices to the taxing districts from 750 feet. So you have to go through, and you have to spend some money to designate it. You have to, you have to go through almost the same exact process, because you have to qualify any of those areas, any of those parcels that you include later. You would have to qualify them, do an eligibility analysis of those parcels, and then go through those same public hearing and notification processes. So it's better to do it all at once, I would think. If you know you're, if you know, I mean, it's five years from now, that's one thing, but if it's...
If you know you're going to be, you're going to need to work in that area, you might want to consider that in the beginning, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Quinn?
No, I don't have any further questions.
Alderman, Alder Lady Cameron? I told you, I trip, I trip over Alderman and Alder women, so...
That's okay. No questions.
I'm going to get it over.
I have a quick question. Anytime you hear about a TIF, tax incremental funding, schools are against it, probably the library, or any of the self-taxing bodies, why is that?
Well, I think if you have, I think the question is, it really comes down to, oftentimes comes down to, this would have developed, been developed anyway, and you're therefore diverting revenue. So you have to conduct an analysis that says, but for the use of TIF, this project wouldn't happen at all, or in the manner we want it to. So if you have, if you have a comprehensive plan that says, we want this to be a transit-oriented development, and it has environmental contamination that can only be overcome by some TIF assistance, and somebody said, well, we can put townhomes on it, but you really wanted, you really wanted a dense apartment development there, it's not developing in the way that you want it, perhaps. So the city, the taxing districts can say, you know, this would have happened anyway. We're happy with the development, just as it is. So in this case, you have a sort of an underutilized area, the taxing districts aren't currently getting any revenue from it, and if the developers go away, then there's no money to be had for anybody. It'll continue in its state until someone can get past the sewer water issue. It's serving extraordinary condition that you have to overcome.
All right. The schools, I'll say you're going to bring us more kids, that's going to cost us more money, and we're not getting a share of the tax, of the TIF funds. Is that correct?
Partly correct. The TIF legislation requires, they dictate a calculation of the number of dollars that has to go to a school district or a library district for every student or resident that is generated by the TIF. So a certain number of dollars is calculated for actual students that are generated by a development, and that goes to the, that goes to the school district.
And what would be the objection, because this is contiguous, I believe, to a park library? What would their objection be?
The library?
Yeah. The library district.
We don't often get too many library districts objecting to TIF districts, but it would be the same base, it would be the same idea, you know, this would have happened anyway. Therefore, we're, we're not going to get our, the full amount of revenue that we would otherwise get.
All right. Any follow-up questions before we ask for you to come up and tell us you have a new program, or a different program than we heard about last time?
Can I ask you another question? That's a side...
Please, on the microphone.
So we're hoping, expecting, in like, with six years, eight years left in the TIF, that there will be a surplus, which could conceivably be used for some of these storm detention drainage problems that the city has identified. Is there anything in the TIF Act that prevents the city from expanding the borders for that last six or eight years of the TIF, so that that land, with that geography, as you put it, would then be eligible for expenditures for something like storm drainage improvements?
Well, yes. I'll answer it this way. Let's say the last six years, you declare a surplus. That money is unencumbered. It's, it goes back to the taxing districts on the prorata basis, and that money can be used for whatever you want. It's not part of your levy, so it's sort of, I said unencumbered, but you'd probably have a different word for it. And you can use it for whatever purpose you want. But if you are, if you want, if it is, that area is not in the TIF, and you want to do an infrastructure project with TIF dollars, you know, like, think of the TIF Special Allocation Fund as a checkbook, and you wanted to write a TIF check for that, you couldn't do it because it was outside of the geography.
But if you had then included that ground in the geography and...
Then you could use it.
Okay. And then finally, the developer, can you explain that? And is that how the developer gets repaid from the TIF fund?
Yes.
And that does not come with any full faith and credit of the city?
Correct. So, so the, after you've set up your TIF district, you enter into a redevelopment agreement with the developer, and you identify the terms of that agreement. The developer will build 61 units, they'll do it in this timeframe, here's their budget. And in exchange for them developing this property in this timeline, under these, under these other terms and conditions, we, the city, agree to pay them the amount of new taxes that they have generated on an annual basis. So if they generate a million dollars in revenue, the, they're paid out, let's say they're, in this case, they're generating $18 million in revenue over the 23-year life of the TIF. They, you, as part of the redevelopment agreement, you'll issue a promissory note, and it'll have a, it's like a mortgage. It has a principal and interest that's paid out over time, as the money comes in from the redevelopment project. And once that dollar amount has been reached, the note is closed, and the project is complete.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question.
Yes, go.
Typically, when you go into TIF, there's bonds sold in order to generate that revenue. You're saying that the developer will front the money he needs, or whatever's needed for portions of the project. Is it finalized, is to what extent that increment's going to be available? Or is it going to be, there would have to be bonds issued for future money?
This wouldn't, these are not bonds. This is a promissory note, and an interest rate is issued, so that, because the developer is front-funding it, they're putting out, they're, they're spending all of their money on the project, and then they say, here's the money we spent. That, that dollar amount that they've, that has been agreed upon, goes to the value, that creates the value of the note. And that dollar amount is what sets your principal and interest value to be paid out over time, as increment is generated by the thing, or by the development. So no bonds, the full faith and credit is not, is not required by the city, Prospect Heights at all. It's a promissory note, it is not, it is not in your annual report or your CAFR. It's, it's an obligation on the part of the city that is paid out by the TIF revenue generated. So it's not a, it's, no, no bonds are issued. That's a distinguishing feature from the arena TIF, for sure.
Does that change the value of the TIF, or you do the full value of the expected increment that's going to be generated?
No.
Or just based on project needs?
Project needs. You identify what the project, you identify what the gap is, what they need to make the project feasible, and then that sets the dollar amount of the TIF request, and then you amortize the, that TIF dollar amount over the amount of years that it takes to pay it back from their development.
If we were to increase the TIF size, because it doesn't make sense to create a second TIF and join it and try and transfer the money from one to the other to do the work, you did a front. If you did a front, and you increased the size and the increment, then you could create a larger promissory note, but at some point, Lexington would be like, that's it, we're done. So would this have to generate? Would there have to be bonds sold in order to generate any kind of front? We don't want to wait till year 20 if we're going to expand the size of the TIF to do some future work. There's no benefit to that, you know, for us. Everything's about the now, right? We're going to do now.
Right. You got a problem now, you want to solve it now.
Right. We got a problem, we got plenty of problems there that ten TIFs wouldn't fix in any area of town when it comes to flooding. So in order to, in order to get that additional revenue, we would have to sell bonds if we were to do it ahead of time. Then we would be obligated, the city, the city wouldn't be, it would be the TIF, you know, those bonds would only be payable by revenue from the TIF, but we would have to bond out that money if we were to do a project, and the expanded size of the TIF before the life of the TIF was over.
So, so in that instance, because it is the city that would want to undertake the project, you would be the developer in this case, right? You would be the one saying, I need to, I need to fund this project. So you would have to, you would probably have to issue some sort of bonds, or you could pay yourself back if you had a, if you have dollars amount, dollar amounts that's fungible, you could pay it out of that, and then pay that account back with TIF funds.
Because TIFs usually try to maximize their use when you're doing it. I mean, is it kind of more, is it more typical that they're going to be to the, to the high side of predicted EAV in the future? I mean, what is the EAV on this, or what would you see as the increment on this if there was no limitation?
I think...
No self-imposed limitation?
For... For, it, it is a disservice for us to do anything but a conservative estimate. We would never want to overestimate something and be wrong. So we're always going to have a very conservative estimate of incremental revenue. And I think you can, for the scenario that you're describing, you basically have two objectives that I can, that we're talking about here. One would be the developer objective and the second one would be your public objective.
But do you have an idea of what that, what this is capable of?
Well, I'm, I've only seen this, you're talking about this area exclusively of whatever is added?
Right, because you have the, the other areas to know.
Yeah. We, we identify a gross minimum amount of eighteen million dollars being generated over the life of the TIF, over the twenty-three year life of the TIF.
But you're only using five of it?
Yeah, we're, we're asking for five or six.
So eighteen million within the current boundaries of the TIF?
Yes.
You didn't include it, did you?
This, yeah, that's eighteen million, that's not the present value of, of-
But the present value is higher than five million. It could be, okay.
Can you answer the gentleman's question? He said, can you carve out part of the product, the bond or the, for store drainage? And part of the, for the, for this ground with Lexington has under contract to be paid back by developers?
Well, I think you would want to, you'd basically want to have positions. You'd want to have a first position, which would be your developer. And the principal and interest that they need to, or that is needed to make their commitment would be the front first position. And then anything remaining after that can be declared a surplus or could be used for your secondary project. And then you do that either annually or collectively and, you know, as you look at the whole TIF. Yeah. Yeah.
Because there's about forty homes in that neighborhood north of you that need the drainage, just using quick numbers. If there's forty or four hundred thousand, you know, each of those homes at two percent a year is about, is that, I don't know what that, what that would generate. But there's a, you definitely can figure out what it's worth, you know, what that would be worth to do those other homes.
We can take a look at it.
Just to see what the, how much that would be. Because, you know, any kind of drainage up there, any project we look at for drainage is two million plus. So, I mean, it's, it's a big number.
Yeah.
If we're going to do that, we need to know that ahead of time, you know, what the limitation would be by expanding that.
Okay.
And, you know, what the cost, because now we get into, not to pick at consultants, but we probably have six more consultants. We'll have bond consultants and, and what do they call those opinions, expensive ones?
Legal opinions?
You guys right?
Bond counsel?
Oh, for bond counsel?
Qualified opinions?
The opinions, you guys right, opinion letters. So, I mean, it gets really expensive, but if we knew that upfront, that might-
Better to know now than, yeah. Yeah, we're happy to look at it. I'm going to hand it over to Nate for the-
Nate, good evening. Thank you for meeting with Alderman-
Morgan Adams?
Morgan Adams. She has three names, you know, I get confused. And myself. And two of the things that we asked you is what came up at this meeting last time. And that was the parking issue. Is there or will there be enough parking? And a number of units, you've apparently nailed down to sixty-one. So give us a little bit of a background of what we spoke about.
Yes, thank you, thank you. One thing that is sticking out in my mind that I want to address before I forget, because I will forget, was a question I had for Anne as we were talking, just at the end there. Any, any additional expenses that would be incurred after the fact? Whether, whether the, let's just say if the TIF were expanded after the fact or any bond counsel or consulting fees that would be incurred, would those all be TIF eligible to be reimbursed?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I just, there was a question jumped out at me and I-
Were there any soft costs?
Yeah.
That can be linked to or is associated with, I know there was hard eligible costs?
Okay. So even after the fact, if the, if the city incurred costs at some point in time, those would all be TIF eligible? That's, I just wanted to point that out. Yes, so tonight, what I wanted to do was come back to you with some revisions. Some of those were prompted by the discussion we had here last time. Some were driven by conversations that we've had ongoing with the Park District. So what we did was basically took that same PowerPoint that we showed you last time. We've updated some of the plans and figures. Same information on, on, just didn't quite slid all the way up. Same, yeah, there we go. There's a summary in the beginning, information on Lexington, a couple of different pieces. This is the development team and it's the same as the last meeting we had. Same general location map here, which shows the J F H property on the north half and Muir Park on the south half. This is a revised plan from the one you saw last time. It probably looks a lot like the one we had in front of you last time. The difference being that the, the last presentation we showed you kind of had two scenarios. An A and a B, one was sixty-one units, one was eighty, all dependent on whether or not the Park District land was going to be incorporated in some fashion. So we, in our last meeting with the Park District Board, the decision was made to appoint a two-person committee or task force consisting of the president and the vice president of the Park District to work with us to lay out a critical path and the terms under which we would proceed with them. And then also a recommendation by their attorney, the Park District's attorney, that the process that I think we maybe touched on last time, that's, it's complicated with IDNR because they funded the purchase of the Parkland in the beginning. IDNR would require a process for any swapping of land or what they refer to as conversion of land. They recommended that we be directed by the Park District to initiate application to IDNR.
If they gave us the go ahead?
Right, if they give us the go ahead. The process we had proposed would be the Park District Attorney would initiate application and we would reimburse them. They thought it would probably be a better process if we made the application directly. So it was a very good meeting, very productive meeting. Probably after next week's holiday, we'll get together and start to lay out the details of that proposal. A couple of changes, major changes is this plan, so it incorporates Muir Park. Instead of being eighty units, it is sixty-nine units. What we have shown as a boundary for the Park District land is four and a half acres. Muir Park today is four and a half acres. So what we've, what we've created is a park design plan that would be acre for acre the same size. So we're truly swapping out land rather than dealing with some reduction in, in Parkland. The, the reduction of units inherently increased our parking ratio. But to, to kind of generally address that issue, first of all, the park plan now has the parking area, parking lot directly on the park property. We're proposing, and this is through discussions with the Park District, a multipurpose field on the south end of the park that could be, what's shown there is kind of the outline of a regulation. Football field, baseball diamond, could be lacrosse, soccer, a number, any number of recreational uses. There are green areas on either side of the roads throughout the development from Oak Avenue entering in and circling through the site. Some of those parkways you'll see has perpendicular parking with gaps for landscape areas. Some areas don't have any perpendicular parking shown. So I think that, what I would point out is that there, there is plenty of room to add parking in that perpendicular condition for guest parking throughout. If, if it were determined by the city that there should be more parking provided, we would make those plan changes as we proceed. If, at some point, I, I like the approach of what I would refer to as like land banking parking where we, we, we conclude a, a number of parking spaces that we think is ample with additional optional parking. And we, we dedicate that in, in the plat and in the engineering that as the project gets built through, whether it's fifty percent, seventy-five percent, ninety percent, if, if the city and the Park District come back and review this at some point, say, you know, we've been out there on evenings, weekends. We think some of these optional parking spaces need to be added because we're, we see a high demand for parking. I like that approach only because it's, it's always nice that if the determination is made that there's ample parking, I'd rather have landscaping in those areas than asphalt pavement. But that's all part of the plan review process. And I think maybe Tom touched on at the beginning is this is really a multi-step process. This isn't an event. That's why we're not asking for any action tonight to be taken by the council. We recognize that those plan details, all of the zoning details, those are all going to have to be part of the entitlement process. So we're really laying out the general approach at this point in time. So this is the revised plan, sixty-nine units with a four and a half acre park. Same example architecture that we showed last time for the townhomes to be built. Under the TIF analysis, the TIF summary, we've simply updated this to reflect instead of, if you look at the one from a couple of weeks ago, it said scenario A, scenario B. This is just simply the, the revised plan that we've kind of settled on with the Park District and that is sixty-nine units. Estimated completion within two and a half years. As Anne pointed out, the current property tax is zero. The estimated TIF revenue is eighteen million over the life of the TIF. The eligible costs adjusted for the number of units and the infrastructure is roughly six million. And then just a summary of the allocation of those funds, the estimated revenue is eighteen, developer reimbursement of six. And then as Anne pointed out, there's school district reimbursement. So throughout the life of the TIF, there's a carve out for the school districts annually. And that, correct me if I'm wrong, Anne, but that is adjusted by the actual number of students. So if there's, okay. So we, I'll show you an estimate in a moment, but that is a number that's counted annually so that depending upon the actual number of school age children, that can be adjusted. So there's, there's a carve out every year for the school district regardless of if the TIF is still in place. This is that timeline that Anne referred to, that's the fourth to the last page. Kind of goes through from start to finish what the process looks like for the TIF. And then as we talked about, there would be a water system here. We've left it off of some of the information that we'll talk about in a minute. But because at this point, whether it's owned by, owned in, owned by the city long-term or it's sold to a private water company is to be determined by the city. But this can, gives you an idea of, just based on our water engineer who kind of came up with the preliminary designs for the system. This is an estimated revenue and costs. The assumptions for those estimates are below. And this one is extremely hard to read. So what I'd like to do is hand everybody a little larger format. Okay. You just don't have it. Everybody has this taxing district revenue estimated. I won't spend a lot of time on this since everybody's had a hard copy of this. But some of the assumptions are at the top, the key assumption, sixty-nine units. The population equivalent for sixty-nine units that we're assuming is a hundred and fifty-two. And then from that, so the city of Prospect Heights estimated revenue, some of that's based on a per capita distribution, which is why those vehicle stickers and promoting the census are so important because you need an accurate count to capture all of your residents. Because some of that funding that comes from the federal and state government is just strictly on a, on a population basis. So we've worked with your staff to determine what the per capita rates are for some of the revenue sharing and sales tax sharing per, per capita. Vehicle stickers, assuming two cars per unit, sewer fees, and then real estate taxes after the TIF reimbursement. And that, as was pointed out here, you don't have a city tax. So that is predominantly for the, goes towards the police pensions. Below that shows a one-time revenue to the city. That is during the construction cycle, that, that first two and a half years. That is just an estimate based on your current permit fees per unit. So it totals three hundred and ninety-three thousand. And then we get to the Park District. We've made kind of the same assumptions working with their staff there. Some pool pass revenue, rec fees, fitness center memberships. Property taxes for the school district after the TIF reimbursement is about fifty thousand dollars a year. The one-time upfront revenue for the park would be acquisition of five hundred thousand and then the improvement to the park, which is estimated to be about two hundred thousand. You know, part of the reasoning and motivation behind this process we've undertaken to include Muir Park. And I think your staff was very thorough with their approach to this when we first started talking. And that was to recognize that as, if, if this goes forward with the TIF, there will, there would be permit fee revenue and revenue for the city that would naturally be generated. There's the carve out for the school district, which is substantial. There would be also school impact fees upfront. There's really no provision for a carve out for the Park District. That without incorporating the Park District into this process whereby we give them that half million upfront, which is equivalent to about ten years of potential tax revenue upfront, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be inherently built into a TIF that the Park District would be provided anything. Then we go to the school districts. This top line is the carve out that we talked about and that is estimated on a school age population. It's ninety-two thousand, almost ninety-three thousand a year that would be paid to the, to the school district during the life of the TIF. And again, if there are any more eligible or school age children, that, that number could, could be increased for the school district. And then after the, the TIF, both District Twenty-three and District Two-Fourteen have a combined annual revenue of about three hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And below that, we have Library District during the life of the TIF, after the TIF reimbursements, and then fire protection as well. Down at the bottom, the box below gives a grand total. So during the TIF, the annual revenue, so this doesn't include the upfront revenue, would be a hundred and seventy-nine thousand a year during the TIF. After the, the point of surplus, it's about six hundred and twenty-five thousand a year. The upfront one-time revenues are estimated to be a million one. A couple of things that, one of the things we didn't include in here is any estimate for revenue from the water system being sold or, or kept and operated. We don't, you know, any number for that would be an estimate now. So we've completely left that out of the assumptions at this point. The other thing that is not in here are any upfront school impact fees, which we know and would fully expect that there would be school impact fees paid at, at the time of building permit. The both, neither school district has published impact fees. And the city does not currently have a school impact fee ordinance. That doesn't mean that we get to pay zero. It means that- It means that as part of this process, when we're going to sit down with the school district and talk through the TIF, we're also going to settle on and determine a, an appropriate impact fee to be paid to both the elementary district and the high school district. But because we don't know what that is yet, we haven't included it in this revenue estimate. I think that was it.
Can you just give us a couple of follow-ups?
Sure.
And then, I just, park district, are you suggesting that they wait to get that half million dollars for acquisition or is this going to be one of the first dollars out the door, Lexington's going to be paying and then asking if you were paid for it?
Our proposal to the park district is that we would close on that purchase or that acquisition fee at the same time we close on the JFH property. So, that would be an upfront payment.
Okay, and then at the last meeting, you heard some concern about the city taking over the water system, the city operating the water system. Have you given any more thought to that and where's your thinking on that now?
Yeah, I think practically speaking, what would happen is we would build the water system upfront. We would complete it to the point at which we are connecting homes to that water system. The way I would view it or term it is we would, we would complete the system to a point of stabilized operating water system. At that point in time, if the city, if the city did not want to take ownership, it would be sold under our overall developer agreement. It would be sold to likely a private water company operating in the area already. The revenue from any sale of that would come to the city. We would, we would be obligated to build it and stabilize it, but if it gets sold, we would not have any claim to any of that revenue. And again, we didn't include that in here because right now, we don't know what those numbers are. That'd be happy to answer any.
Questions, Alderman Quinn?
No further questions.
Alderman Cameron?
Further questions?
Alderman Wendy Morgan Adams?
No questions at this time.
Alderman Ludwicks?
Couple of things. That allocation of TIF funds where you show that it has a 9.48 million left over and the $18 million estimated TIF revenue. Are you suggesting then that that entire amount of the 8.52 is something that would be funded by Lexington in, you know, through that promissory note for the TIF to pay back? Or is there a portion of that that you would say wouldn't be in the?
No, whatever, whatever the final developer note or reimbursement amount would be, that would be reimbursed through the increment from the taxes paid. That the school reimbursement, we called it, but really that is, that's the carve-out over the life of the TIF. So, that, they would be, the school district is paid back in the same fashion we are.
But there has to be some instrument to do that, right? I mean, you can't just say, the county's not going to just say, here, here's the difference and they're not going to do this math and this work for, where they collect the taxes.
Yeah, how does that work? Who determines when, how the school gets paid, when they get paid, what they get paid?
My understanding is that the school district has to say, we have this many students and the calculation is made by the developer and the developer makes the payment.
So, you would be funding it though?
We'll have to clarify.
So, then the intention is for them to do the 8.52 million? That that's what the developer note would be for?
No, the, the, they're separate things, so the different streams. So, the note would be paid by the city, the dollar amount would be paid by, by the city.
Because the county sends it to us.
Right.
We pay the city, but, or pay them, but how do we?
You would issue, they would hold the TIF note?
Correct.
And you would pay them principal and interest on that $6 million TIF note or whatever it is. And in a separate transaction, the dollar amount that is required to pay to the park district for specific number, or, yeah, sorry, school district, school district for the designated number of school children would be calculated by the park dis, or, I keep saying the park district, sorry. The school district would generate, would identify the number of students and what the calculation was and they would send a requisition, please pay this, and that would come out of the TIF funds as well.
All right, but in order for us to get the money, I don't know if that's making sense, but in order for us to get paid from the county, we have to tell them how much to pay us, right? So, we can't pay, we can't just, we're not going to just collect willy-nilly the money from the county. I mean, we have to have, do we have like a bond, like some kind of note that says it's got some?
Everything, everything that is generated by the TIF, all the incremental revenue that is generated by the TIF goes to the city and gets, and the city puts it in their special allocation fund.
So, at the end, because our other TIF didn't go like that, I mean, at the end of this TIF then, we would have, if everything went according to this, we'd have nine, in today's money, we'd have 9.48 million in the account that we would then have to reimburse back to the schools. So, you're saying we collect all of it?
Unless you didn't, let's assume you're not spending it on other TIF.
So, we do collect, because I was asking earlier, how do you separate their money from this 9.48 million? If you were to issue bonds, does that work upfront? And you said, well, you'd have to issue bonds and treat this TIF as two different revenue streams and paying different things. You have a senior and junior notes and?
Right.
And everything else. So, we would collect the full amount. So, then my, the answer to my question would have been that we would collect the full amount of the increment.
Yes.
Regardless of how much that is, it could be, it could be instead of 18, it could be 26 million if?
Right.
Property values go really well.
Right.
And then we're responsible to distribute that.
That's correct.
Distribute that back to the schools every year.
Right.
So, we're limited to our note. The schools are limited to the actual number of school aged, school-aged children generated from the project, from the property. And then beyond that is surplus. So, my understanding is that, that is, that surplus for, you know, additional TIF expenses or at some point in time, because this was kind of information to me recently, that you could end the TIF early or you could terminate the TIF early?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, and then just two other things. You showed those garages, you show, there is not, like when we think of Rob Roy parking in front of the garages.
Right.
This place, you're in the garage if you're pulling up to your unit or you're parking in the side parking.
Right, it's the two-car garage and then guest parking.
Right.
Yeah. Not, not a typical.
You're not parking in front, okay. And the other thing is you showed the value of the current EAV as being zero, but half of that is, there's some EAV there. Jolly Fun House doesn't pay tax?
Uh-uh. It's exempt.
How did that happen?
Now, the camera's around, I don't know, I have no idea.
Really?
I have no idea. So?
That might be something that comes up.
Good for, good for TIF because it's already a zero. Nobody's collecting any taxes from the property, but, yeah.
Nobody can come back later and zing you for that? That's happened to us before.
Oh, he understands what the park.
Say that should have been collected?
Yeah. It's just a very unique situation. I mean, the, like I maybe said at the last meeting, I mean, it's very, when you talk about like the school district sometimes don't like TIF and the other entities, typically there's something being frozen or taken away that, you know, if this was commercial property generating a few hundred thousand dollars a year in taxes and you want to create a TIF, now, yes, it's being redeveloped and whatever's there, some manufacturing facilities being torn down. The school districts could be upset by, you know, we're already collecting 150,000 a year and now you want to lock us into this fixed number. The benefit here is there, there's already zero being collected by any entity. So, all increment will be additional for all the taxing entities.
All right. Thank you. Alderman Dole?
No questions, thank you.
Any closing remarks?
We look forward to our next meeting and further discussion.
When, when can you dig a hole? That's what I want to know.
Yeah. It's, you know, it's, it's a complicated process and we recognize that and like I said, we, this is, it's, it's difficult for some people to imagine that something like this isn't episodic. You come in, you get an approval and everything's approved and you're on your merry way. This is a process and, and, you know, it's the same as any other development process we go through. The TIF is another piece of it that's a little more complicated, but we just, we appreciate your time and your consideration and look forward to working through that process.
Thank you.
So, as the nudge of the group, we would hope that, that perhaps at the next meeting, it could be on the city council or the next time that we've talked about this inducement resolution and we're available to be with any of you who have any concerns, but to consider doing the inducement resolution so that we can start the TIF consultants on this, but, you know, your attorney will confirm for you that it's written in a way that it's, it's not an obligation, you can back out of it anytime if you have some concerns, but so that we can start the process because it is time consuming. We have to do a TIF study, so, but if you're not comfortable going ahead at the next meeting, we will continue to come here and answer your questions. So, with that, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you to you too. What, how do we start this? Kessler?
I can draft it. If there's direction from the council or even just the mayor, I can draft a inducement resolution for placement, just so you folks know, there's only one more meeting left in the year on the ninth and then it would be January. So, it would have to be December 9th as, otherwise you'll have to wait till January for a resolution to be passed. So, I could draft a resolution for placement on the December 9th agenda and then it can be considered by the council at that time.
Anyone want to comment on that, please? Not?
I would like to make a motion for that. A motion to go ahead and have council draft the inducement resolution.
I can do this without any.
I mean, I could, you can direct me to draft something and it can place on the agenda and then the council would vote on it.
All right, well, let's make sure this is on board.
Just a quick question about that. I mean, there are so many things, I mean, just to give you an example, you showed the wellhouse and the location. Your guy is going to come out and say, that's not the right spot and it's going to be somewhere else and on top of six parking spots and, you know, we're going to be back to square one with less parking than we thought. How do we address that as they come up? If we do this enticement, inducement letter now and then things change, that change the calculus of?
Well, you want to answer and then I can?
I always defer to it.
Okay, so what I think might be useful is, because I spoke to a few aldermen about just sort of a general lack of knowledge of the process, I have a, I can send around a memo that outlines the process for everyone so that they're informed about the steps that need to be taken. You saw a timeline presented by Lexington. This will kind of flesh out the sort of statutory requirements on the city's part for this process and you can understand what each step entails. And then you'll see the inducement memo on there and what's required and what it binds the city or doesn't bind the city to. And then if you have any questions before the next meeting, I can draft the resolution and then if you have any questions before the next meeting, you know, we can address it at that time and we can always table the resolution or continue it to January if you, if you feel that your questions haven't been answered.
I mean, this type of an inducement letter would say things like, yeah, you can go ahead and move forward with whatever you are willing to pay for, does not mean that when engineering goes and they need another acre and a half of detention pond per whatever issues might be there and now it goes from a joint football, baseball field to just a Pee-wee baseball field with no parking. Those are the kind of things that would concern me.
Yeah.
That, that that's addressed in our inducement letter, that we're not responsible.
Bound for any.
You've drawn a plan of what you think it's going to be, you know, if it changes plus or minus some percentage from that, you know.
I understand, Mr. Alderman, and we can make it clear, it's our understanding that you're not making any commitment at all about the entitlement process, which is usually when you're seeing this for the first time with the site plan and, you know, where the wellhouse is and is detention sufficient, so, you're not making, and council can make that very clear. We understand, we're taking it, we're going, proceeding at our own risk.
We could take, we could make that clear, but you're still using this letter as a, as a direction to say, we're going to move forward with this and you're putting weight in the letter. You wouldn't want the letter if it wasn't important, so.
Well, the purpose of the letter is so that we can then now capture as TIF-eligible expenses, anything that's spent from this point forward. And based on the timeline, if you wind up approving the TIF and the inducement resolution says you're not binding yourself to adopt a TIF here, and I'm confident that your council can address your concerns. So, the reason we want that, I, there's really two reasons. One, so we can protect these expenses that we're making as TIF-eligible and two, so that we can start the process at our own risk or to find out that we're wasting our time and we're never, you know, this is not something the city's interested in, but you're not making a commitment on the entitlement, you're not making a commitment. Council, do you agree with me on that?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can try to make it as ironclad as we can before to address your concerns. Why don't you tell me all your concerns, Ben?
I don't think so.
All right, we do have a motion on the floor. And we need a second.
Well, I was just told that we don't need the motion right now, am I correct?
Well, but you already made it and I'd like to have everybody say yes so that there's no one paying out there with different thoughts. So, can we?
Before we, before we go on, was it, and I apologize, I was late this evening, was it discussed the, the difference between what this TIF is about and what happened with the prior TIF or was this plan, okay?
Yeah.
I missed that, all right. Just to make sure.
Come on, let's have a second, please.
Second?
We have a second. Take a roll call, please.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwicks?
Aye.
Alderman Dole?
Aye.
Ready to get you? Motion passes 5-0. So, get to work, please. All right, Joe?
Mr. Mayor, the next item is appointments, confirmations, proclamations, and item 7A is the appointment of city clerk Joanna Prigiano. I'm trying, I'm trying. As a city representative to the greater Wheeling Chamber of Commerce.
All right. Do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
We need a second. Did you second all of them?
Second?
Well, we have everybody here, that's fine. Voice vote or?
Yeah.
Voice vote, please, all in favor, say aye.
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 If you're opposed, please say nay. Motion passes 5-0, moving on.
Public comment, do we have any items introduced? No?
No.
Which brings us to weekly reports, meeting reports.
All right, what do we have?
And starting with the city clerk.
I don't have a report, but I do want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, all our residents, all the employees of City Hall, our wonderful council, and I hope to see many of you at the tree lighting ceremony this Saturday at 5:00 PM. Our mayor will be doing a countdown for the Christmas lighting, there will be refreshments. Also, on December 9th, we'll have the 14th Annual Christmas Raffle at 6:00 PM at the Union Ale House. Raffle tickets can be purchased at the police or fire stations. All proceeds are going to provide gifts, winter clothing and meals to our local families. So, there will be prizes for second and third prize, monetary prizes, $5 a ticket or $20 for five tickets or 20 tickets for $50, so please come and help us out. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Who's next?
Treasure Tibbetts has a family emergency he's responding to and he advised he wasn't able to make this meeting.
All right.
Brings us to Alderman Cameron.
No report, but I wanted to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving.
Alderman Quinn?
One, I want to thank Mark Roscoe. I had a resident in my ward that had a situation with ICE and he responded in a very timely manner, so I want to thank- with ICE, and he responded in a very timely manner. So, I want to thank you for, for doing that, because I know that's really important to people when they reach out to us. So, thank you. Also, I had another resident that had watched the November 11th meeting, and sent an email, just letting us know as a council that she happens to live in the vicinity of the Flower Garden Daycare, and she watches children walk back and forth from the childcare center to the pool in the summer. And so, she just wanted to have that go on record. So, I really appreciate when the residents listen, even if they're not at the meetings, and, and they participate in that way. I think it's great, and just wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving also.
All right. Alderman Morgan Adams?
I also want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I believe my report has already been discussed with respect to my meeting with the mayor in Lexington. So, other than that, I don't have an additional report for tonight.
Thank you.
Alderman Ludvigson?
No report.
Alderman Dolik?
No report. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Finance Director Ducharme?
I have a couple of items on the agenda, the treasurer's report, as well as first reading of the tax levy ordinances. I would say happy Thanksgiving.
Building and Economic Development Director Peterson?
Hi, really quickly. Last week, I attended the Board of Directors meeting for the Wheeling, Greater Wheeling Area Chamber of Commerce, which I've been serving on the board for the last couple of months, until Clerk Joanna has been recently assigned. The meeting went very well. There is a new full-time executive director. Ms. Linda Callahan has been voted in by the board as a full-time director. So, at the beginning of December, she will be taking over fully. No split, two-part-time people, which is good for the chamber. Secondly, on Wednesday, December 4th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, the chamber will be having their next after-hours meet and greet business social at the City Works Establishment in the Wheeling Town Center. And if anybody is interested in going, let me know, or, and I can give you the RSVP information. Additionally, the Wheeling, the chamber was supposed to do their strategic planning session this month. However, due to the transition of executive directors, they will be putting it off. It looks like either it will be in December, or the first meeting in January. That's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Assistant Administrator Falconi?
No report, sir.
Public Works Director Roscoe?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just a couple of things. We have two more days for yard waste pickup. Be this Saturday coming up, and then the following February, December, February, December 6th. Asking residents to make sure they clean out their swales and culverts, to help try to reduce that spring thaw blockages that we've had in the other year. So, keep an eye on it. And again, holiday tree lighting this Saturday. Looking forward to it, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
The report I have, I have bad news. Cut to the chase. We will not be able to pave Plaza Drive this season. As everybody is aware, we ran into some wintry weather, approximately Halloween. It stayed with us. What that has created is a real problem as far as drying the subbase of the street, which we were in process of reconstructing. So, the best we're able to do is to provide temporary asphalt connections to the apartments and Palwaki Plaza. We will do that, and then we'll come back in the spring. We'll complete the paving. But for us to pave over a very wet base, would, is, is going to cause more expensive problems later. So, I'm sorry, we will not be able to complete the, that pavement reconstruction this, this season. We'll be back as soon as we can, hopefully March or April, if we have an early spring or so. So, that's, it happens. Sometimes you win, sometimes you lose, and sometimes it rains. In this case, it rained, and it froze. So, that's where we're at with Plaza Drive.
All right, can we get Joe Pescucci to tell us about turkeys?
Speaking of turkeys, we, this past weekend, we had officers, police, our citizen volunteers, and some city staff collected at Tony's all weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, filled up a box truck that we got from Route 12 rental, and the distribution's going to be tomorrow night at Harper. Last year, we served probably over 100 families. So, we'll be there tomorrow, giving out food that we collected over the weekend. So, it was very successful. Also, officers have been out collecting. If you've kind of noticed lately, they're kind of getting a little grubby on the face. It's a no shave, no, no shave November. They've been out on street corners collecting money for cancer. They love it this time, so, and they always ask, "Can we do it a little bit longer?" Because I don't allow any facial hair. So, they, they love it during the wintertime. So, we had a little contest. So, if they collect money, they can wear the beard for November. December, if they sell tickets to the raffle, I'll let them keep another month. And now, they want to extend it another month. So, what I did was, we had a competition. Whatever shift sold enough tickets for the raffle, for their Christmas gifts for the needy, they can wear their beards into January. Ticket sales have skyrocketed. These guys are out there pushing these tickets. I've never seen them sell so many this year, which is a good thing. So, one shift, we'll get to keep their beards, and one extra month. So, it's a little bit of fun we have over there, but they've done a great job collecting the food and, and the money for the cancer. So, even Bane was out there with the bucket hanging off his mouth one day. I think that he gets the most money out there. So, that's about all I have, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Well, we do have turkey story, though. Joe Pascucci donated 50 turkeys, and what happened to those? I didn't get one.
Well, you have to come over to Harper tomorrow. Those, I think they're getting picked up tomorrow, and they will be distributed to families. I think we got 50 turkeys. So, they'll also be handed out tomorrow.
Good. I don't, enjoy your Thanksgiving holiday, and come back with a few extra pounds, and we'll go back to work. What's next, Joe?
Brings us to other, other reports. We have Chicago Executive Airport Report, presented by Director Saber.
Good evening, Mayor, and I hope we get this right. I've had enough time. Alder people? Is that close? Anyway, you missed that, Wendy. It was a little earlier. But anyway, officials and residents as well. As you know, I'm here to present the Chicago Executive Airport Report, and here's a listing of some of the projects, and of the scheduled highlights from both our staff and from the board itself. One thing that I think is, comes nearer to our, our village here, is crews were on-site installing high-definition cameras at the airport viewing area. The project was a result of a partnership with Prospect Heights Police Department and the airport. We want to thank Chief Zalaki for letting us know about it, and working with the airport to improve this safety enhancement. The airport was also involved in the National Business Aviation Association Annual Conference, and it was attended by CEA in October for information gathering on future aviation trends, airport opportunities, and as well as learning best practices from similar airports. Excuse me. The airport has a pre-bid meeting, the demolition of Hangar Four. That's going well. You know, as a reminder, the demolition of Hangar Four is to make way for the customs, the new customs area that's proposed. Thank you to all those who were able to attend the public meeting, the information session on November 12th, to learn about the start of our residential sound insulation program. There's over 150 residents in attendance at the Ramada Plaza, and they were able to speak with the subject matter experts about the program to help the community which is involved in the noise level control areas. Joey, Jamie said that he sent you a packet, an information packet. I think it was today or yesterday. So, you should be getting that about, all about the RSIP program.
I did get it read. I believe it was today.
Okay, good. So, that should field a lot of questions that, you know, either the staff, or the alderpeople might have. So, it's, it's an exciting program, so we're looking forward to starting that toward the end of the year. Aviation Academy Classroom and Lab Facility in the Southwest Tea Hangar Complex is now under construction, and should be ready for students next semester. This is a joint cooperative program with School District 14, Lewis University, the FAA, and of course, CEA. It's been a groundbreaking program designed to introduce high schoolers into the career of aircraft maintenance. Thanks to Dan for, at the city here, for working with us to secure the permits and to start construction, to make it a success. A reminder, not so much for Alderman Dolik, but on the Quarterly Noise Committee meeting, which you are aware of, will be Wednesday, December 4th at 6:00. I know you're well aware of it, at the administration building at the airport. And finally, the administration office will be closed this Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving. So, are there any questions?
If I could, Alderman Dolik has a new job with the Noise Committee. He was just appointed to not make any noise. Am I right, Alderman Dolik? You volunteered, or they shank you? One of the two?
I was, yes, I did volunteer, and I was approved by the Board of Directors.
Yep, we appreciate that, that insight and help.
Lastly, for me, two of the Wheeling Directors left their posts. Have they been replaced?
Mayor, one has been replaced. That person, I think his name is Bill Hire, his, he is, was on board with us last Wednesday for his first meeting. Status of the other replacement Director Donahue was just basically, I think he's sending in his letter of resignation. So, that's something that'll be on the agenda.
So, there is one slot open, left open right now.
There will be, right.
There will be.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Questions, anyone?
With the Sound Insulation Group, has their office been set up yet?
Yes, it is, Alderman. It's, it's on Industrial Drive, and it's the building that's just north of, the last building on the north side, and the program manager's there every day. So, they're fielding questions right now about it. Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else, please? There being none, thank you for coming.
Well, thank you all, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, you too. Thank you.
October Treasures Report, Director Ducharme?
Another fairly boring report. Through October, we've collected 51% of the scheduled revenues. We're pretty much right on target. Revenues, our expenditures currently reflect only a 33% spending level, but we have a number of debt service payments coming up that are due in December. When those principal payments get made, it'll boost the expenditures up. I'm really surprised by nothing. Everything is pretty much coming through as we expected it or planned in the budget. Be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone, please? All right, so we got money, we're not broke, and it all's going well. Can we say that?
Pardon? I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't hear it.
I said, "We, we're solvent."
We're solvent.
Thank you.
Item 11 is the consent agenda.
And we're looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. What are the items? Numbers?
Item 11A, B, and C.
Item 11A, B, and C.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda submitted.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions, comments, or relevant things to say?
Just comments?
I just have one comment. On the calendar, the city council calendar, I, I, June 9th might be a Tuesday. Is that a holiday or something?
Yeah, I, I think that was an error. I think it should be June 8th.
June 8th is the Monday.
All right, so we have a change on the calendar. It is not, the meeting is not on June 9th, it's on June 8th. Good. Anyone else? Moving on, Joe?
Roll call.
Oh, okay, roll call, please. We have a motion, we have a second, we need a roll call.
Alderman Dolik?
Aye.
Alderman Ludvigson?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Item 12 is old business. This is second reading of the ordinance amending the city code regarding the addition of cannabis retailers' occupation tents.
What do we need? Motion?
Motion, yes, sir.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion, a second, please?
Second?
We have a second. Any discussion? Anyone? Take a roll call, please?
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Or is that the first reading?
No, second reading.
Second.
Okay, because I know we have some first readings in there. Alderman Quinn, you're first.
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Ludvigson?
Aye.
Alderman Dolik?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Item 13, it's a series of tax levy ordinances. They're only first reading, and as in every year, we're required to make a levying assessment, which we file with the county, which then provides for our areas such as the road bond payment, special service areas, as well as a very small portion of police pension payment.
And those are noted right there? Did you get them all?
Yes, sir. There's a series of them, and it's, they're all first reading.
We're not going to vote on that. There is a discussion available, though, if anyone wants to talk on any one of those items.
Any of those items, or just the tax items?
The one we just read, the numbers we just read.
Or just the items A through G, the tax items?
Just the tax item.
There being none, I presume? And we had a motion?
Well, it's, it's first reading, so no, no action necessary.
I said that myself.
We're coming to that.
Oh.
All right, so next item?
Item 13H is first reading of ordinance amending Chapter 1. This is the zoning city, city code pertaining to adult-use cannabis. Director Peterson, you were at the, last Thursday's Plan Commission Zoning Board. Do you want to give us the status of this item?
Thank you very much. The city presented the text amendment application as directed by council last week. The Plan Commission deliberated, after I gave a presentation, report on the status of the actions of the council, actions of the committee, and purposes behind the draft, and how the draft text amendment came forward. There were some questions asked about other businesses, which we answered, that they answered that the council's direction at this point in time was to stay with the retailer sales component. They were fine with all the setback distances for public, private schools, and daycares, and they recommended six to, oh, to unanimously recommend approval of this ordinance as presented by council. So, that's the actions. A write-up, formal write-up is being done this week, because we just saw it Thursday, we just acted on it Thursday night, but the recommendation by the PCBA was six to zero in favor of the text amendments as presented. Thank you.
Just a very quick question for...
Yes, sir, please.
They're, they're looking at the text amendment, which is different than the ordinance that's before us. I mean, is it purely just the locations and, and distance away, and stuff like that? Because, because, I mean, in this now, this, this, and Kevin could talk to this, maybe, this, this version of the ordinance now has the licensing provision in it versus doing it separately.
Well, Dan, you can answer, and I can answer.
We, we presented the draft ordinance that... We presented the draft ordinance that came out of it. The ordinance that you have in front of you tonight was presented to PCBA. We did talk that the zoning code will only allow one special use for a cannabis distillery. There was extensive discussion on the process. If that's issued, could another one come, and is there a process in place should the market demand it? There is always, under our city code, the ability to seek another text amendment in the future should a request come forward. They were just wanting to understand the processes. They were good with the limitations.
But by putting the fee, license fee, and the quantity in there, does that require a text amendment to change this now?
The quantity, yes. I don't believe the dollar amount, because that's ministerial, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Right, and, and the other missing, the other item that would follow from this would be a trailer ordinance, assuming that the council approves this at the December 9th meeting or later meeting, would be a trailer ordinance amending the city's business license section of the code to identify these types of businesses and assess a license fee, that sort of thing. I didn't want to draft that now, not knowing if the city was going to authorize these licenses, but it, the text amendment would, would change, would be required for the number of licenses. The amount would be set by a yearly, would be set by the yearly fine and fee ordinance, I think, or it could also be done via another ordinance on its own.
So, you still have to have a limiting ordinance for licenses, even though it's in here?
Yes. I would recommend so, because there's a specific section in the code with a full schedule of all fees and fines, and we'd want to identify that as well. Some municipalities are doing it our way, some are simply just making the number of licenses reflected in the, in the business license section of their code.
So, you'll have that at the next meeting, then?
I would draft that, I would draft that, assuming this was passed at the next meeting, it would be ready on the January, for a January meeting. I can draft it for the next meeting?
That won't affect anything? I mean, the big concern is it's January 1st.
January 1st to get the zoning in. That is the biggest issue. If you don't have any zoning in, that's the big issue. The business license portion of it is more administrative for the city's purposes, rather than zoning.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, why do we, why does it have, the ordinance itself have to reflect a limitation? Why can't it be open? If we are approving one license right now, but if we, if we don't set a limitation in the ordinance, that gives us the right, without having to do a text amendment, to approve another license, why do we want to limit ourselves? I mean, that's just going to create a whole new big process if we choose to, to accept another license if the market demands it. I mean, I just don't see the reason why we would want to limit ourselves.
So, it was drafted this way at the council's request to only have one license at this time, much like the city's liquor code lays out per license category how many licenses are available, and then is adjusted if a new license is issued or a license is returned. That's the, that's the process we're using here. If the, if the city council determined that they didn't want to have any limitation on licenses, we would remove that, that provision from here.
So, could, my question is, could we approve that we're going to issue one license now without setting a limitation in the ordinance?
I, no, I don't believe so.
You can't do it that way?
No, I don't believe so.
So, is there another way to do it that you wouldn't have to go through a whole other text amendment?
The way, the way you would do it is, if you didn't have a limitation for a, the number of licenses in the, in the zoning code?
Okay.
These are all still special uses, so there is still a process that an applicant would have to go through to get a license, but they, as long as they met the criteria, or to get permission, zoning permission, to cite their business in a certain area. But assuming they meet the eight elements of the zoning code, that the zoning code has for special uses, then they would just get it. Whereas this says, not only do you have to fulfill all the requirements of the zoning code, you also, we are going to say we're only allowing one license in the city. So, those are the two options that the city had, and like, this is just reflective of what the council asked for at the last meeting.
Okay, but it's not necessary to limit at this point. We could simply wait and see what comes in and decide if we're going to approve it, correct?
Well, if you don't have a license, and then you, you, the only, without this limitation in terms of number of licenses? The only restriction that the city has with regard to these businesses is, do they satisfy the criteria of the zoning code and the special use? It's my understanding that with the various distance requirements and setback requirements that are in, in the zoning code, there's only three potential, there could only be three properties or three retail outlets operating in the city, so there's a functional limitation that way.
Right.
But there wouldn't be any other limitation outside of that. It would be, if, if you satisfy the zoning requirements, you can get, you can set up shop, basically.
But the council still would have to approve it.
They would have to approve, it would have to go through a special use application, so it would go to the PCBA and come to the council.
And the council still could decide after.
But the council has to decide, has to decide that based on the factors prevalent in the zoning code, so how does it affect other properties, that sort of thing. It couldn't be, we only, it couldn't only be, we only want one license, because we only want one license. It has to be tied to the elements in the zoning code.
Also, Wendy, we have situations where text amendments have to be brought first, then subsequent special uses can be issued if the text is granted. There is a process in place to do this. Yes, it's cumbersome. Yes, it is, but it would be, it would, it would parallel the special use process, okay? But that, it would, so there is a mechanism, it's just going to have to go through the process, because the, this ordinance requires a special use process anyway. So, if we, a second, let's say, we get one applicant, they go through the special use process, it gets approved, they open shop. Let's say, six months later, in another part of town that meets all the requirements, the distances, they want to come back, but we only have a restriction on one, they'd have to get the text amendment to change the number if the council desires, at the same time they go for the special use.
So, and to piggyback off of what Dan is, is saying, in the past, we've had dual-track text amendments and special use applications where the special use is contingent on the text amendment, and they've gone, they've basically gone at the same meeting. I think stereo is an example of this. So, the stereo trucking, there was not only a special use, but there was a text amendment making the changes to allow them to have a special use. So, the number of meetings could conceivably be the same. It would just be the PCBA meeting and then the city council meetings, even though there's a dual track going on.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, let me just report one thing that I forgot. Karen, Channel Seven came in the door three days ago, four days ago?
Yes.
Okay. And they interviewed me, and everything went well, because I've got a lot, I've gotten a lot of phone calls. But we can't get a copy. I don't think, it's like a three-minute thing. It's not very extensive. You spend a half an hour, forty minutes with someone, and then they give you three sound bites. But they were positive, and there was nothing negative came out of that. You have, you have a copy.
I have it on my phone, but I think Patrick said he could probably get, and it was online at one point.
Oh, it was?
Yes.
I didn't know that. All right, Patrick, we'll play it later if you have it. It's just...
I don't know if he has it, it's played here.
I have it on my phone.
I have it on my phone, too.
Yeah, I do, too, but I couldn't send it in. I don't know why. I couldn't.
You might be able to send the links.
They didn't have a link.
That'd be great, you send the links.
Yeah, maybe send the, we can see if...
All right, if someone can do that, then let's send it to everyone here. Okay? What else?
Item fourteen, the discussion selection of topics for upcoming workshop meeting, and just a point, we missed Kevin at the last meeting, and he had mentioned in an earlier memo about staggered elections, and Kevin, please jump in any time, but basically, this is, I think we had a misunderstanding that this was something that could be started by a council action such as a resolution or ordinance, but actually, it has to be by petition, so...
Yeah, that's correct, Joe. So, it's, unlike the home rule referendum question, which can be by statute initiated by the city council, most petitions are, or most referendum questions can only be initiated by a petition of electors. So, from the city's perspective, if, there's nothing more for the city to do, if aldermen or other elected officials want to get signatures on their, on their free time, they're certainly welcome to do that, but there's no resolution or ordinance or action required or permissible for the city to undertake to, to do the staggered election. There's, I know the memo is about a year old at this point, but it does sort of lay out the process that's, that's required. It's ten percent of the voters who voted in the last general election need to sign, sign the petition.
Does that also apply to term limits?
Uh, yes. If it's a petition question for a referendum on term limits as well, that would also be the same way, I believe. The general rule is, there's very few exceptions where the city council can place a referendum question on a ballot, and the home rule is pretty much the, the primary one that people, people use.
So, my question is, do you, can, can, can we get signatures at any time, or do we, they have to be tied to certain events?
You can get signatures at any time, just, you know, make sure you're not violating the Prohibited Political Activities Act, so you're not utilizing city resources or doing it on city time. So, for elected officials, city time is, you know, when you're here or on city business, but if you're just meeting with neighbors, or you're getting your own signatures for running in a new election, you can do it at the same time.
So, there's no ninety days before and one hundred and twenty days after?
Well, there's, there are the, the standard ballot requirements, timing requirements.
So, you can't circulate now for an election in twenty twenty-two or twenty-three?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You can't circulate for an election in twenty twenty at this point?
I don't, I'd have to check.
I thought it had to be the election that we're at next.
Yeah, it's got to be the next general consolidated election.
Oh, so...
And so, and, and I can, I can certainly circulate the schedule for that.
Okay.
The, the, the county has a, a schedule for election deadlines.
Okay.
I can circulate that.
That'd be great.
And you would just follow that.
Okay, thank you.
And the next item, item fifteen, Madam Clerk, approval of the warrants.
Thank you. Approval of warrants. The total was one hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. We had a payroll posting of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one and thirty-one cents. Police pension payments came out to eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-five cents, and that brings the total warrant to three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Make a motion, we approve?
Second, please.
Second.
Any other discussions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Ludwicksen?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
And Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Public comment? I don't believe we have any items. No executive session is requested, so it brings us to nineteen adjournment.
So moved.
What are we doing?
Adjournment?
Oh, let's hold on. Go ahead and sort of...
Recreational marijuana should be sold in their communities, both Stringwood and Prospect Heights issued surveys before officials debated the issue. John Garcia visited Prospect Heights today, but the answer from the residents, yes.
This coming, recreational use of marijuana will become legal on the first of the year. Where users will be able to buy it is another question, and communities all over the area handling it in their own ways. In Prospect Heights, Mayor Nick Helmer says a survey shows residents support it, but they also formed a committee to make recommendations. The mayor is hoping a three percent sales tax the city could add will add much-needed revenue, and the survey shows most residents agree.
Marijuana is not going to make us rich. As Alderman, that effect, a lot of people say that stop estimating that one outlet brings in six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's just not true.
Among the proposed locations for a new dispensary, a building that at one time housed a bank, or another sitting at the end of a strip mall. Some neighboring business owners, however, are less than enthusiastic. Arne Patel owns a liquor store a few doors down.
I don't know if it's a good thing for me, for the, as a business owner, but let's see what, what they have to say.
While they expect a marijuana dispensary might bring more people to the area, some are also concerned it might not be the right kind of people.
It's hard to say, but, you know, promoting those type of, you know, industries is probably not helpful.
Surrounding communities are split on the issue. Wheeling and Buffalo Grove approved dispensaries, while Arlington Heights voted it down. Do you feel confident, though, that the citizens support this idea? I do, I do. The city council begins discussing the issue at their meeting on Monday. The mayor is hoping to have a new ordinance in place in time for the state law allowing marijuana dispensaries goes into effect on January 1st. In Prospect Heights, John Garcia, ABC 7 News.
Do you have a second?
Not yet. We have, we have a first.
Yeah, Pat made the motion.
We have a second, and we have no film, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you want to stay longer?
I'm sorry?
You want to stay longer, or?
No, no.
All right.
Yeah, you're right, you need signatures, don't you?